Jay Farrell, would you need it from the first?
The mayor will rise to the plate. Pled ladies and citizens, to comply with the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. John Gottes will not be with us tonight. He is croaking like a frog. And so you all have the agenda before you. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I have to do a motion to approve this consent agenda for pulling item four and force the only item to do business.
So the motion has been made to amend the consent just then to review item number four, making it new business. Jay Farrell seconded. Those who pay their fees immediately by standing by. Those opposed. The motion carries. And next is our public hearing for this evening. It's an annexation request. Is there a motion to go into public hearing?
Moved by Kamala Walton, seconded by Michael Fiocco. The mayor will be announced by Jeff Jones, who, I'm sorry, those who pay their fees immediately by standing by. Those opposed. Thank you, Jeff Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. To the board. We have an annexation request for you tonight. This is on Oakwood Drive. Matt here, Tanya and Kevin Thompson, own property at 120 Oakwood Drive. Current zoning is R-12. The applicant is building a home. Building a home. Of course, the rear part. So there was two lots at one time, one that fronted Oakwood Drive, and there's been a recombination of some land towards the rear. The land in the rear is what is for annexation, and that is approximately 1.254 acres. The property, as I said, is proposing to build a home there. You all granted a sewer allocation request that had come earlier than even this year for this property.
Are there questions for Jeff Jones? All right. Is there no questions then? We'll be looking for a motion to go out.
I have a question. What is the town boundary today?
Town boundary is pretty much the line that those lots that front Oakwood Drive are all within the town. So the boundary line is the rear property line of those lots that front Oakwood Drive.
It would be the northern boundary line of Port St. Seville, which is the Red Canyon that's running in.
Does it go all the way up to the street?
This does not. This is only city.
Yeah, but I mean the the.
Yes, yes. And all of the southern properties are downtown.
Okay.
It's only the two lots along Oakwood that is in town.
All right.
That was the first subdivision in Pittsburgh, by the way.
Then if there's no further public comment or questions before then, is there a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Jay Farrell. Those who pay their fees immediately by standing by. Those opposed. Public expression period is next, and Kathy Mayball here to speak on an issue. So if you approach and give us your name and address.
My name is Kathy Mayball, and I live at 64 Julian Lane, just off Thompson Street, not far from here. Can you all hear me? This will be very short. I've been following the Chatham Park development off and on. Not always religiously. It's kind of confusing to keep up with what's going on. But my neighbor has pointed out the maps that are currently on the website that are, because I understand it, under review by the planning board. And I've stopped by the planning board a couple of times and talked to different people about, you know, how to understand the maps, what exactly is going on. And of course, I'm the last house on Julian Lane, so Collector Road A that's been proposed off Thompson Street is actually going to come very close to my house and my neighbor's house. When I stopped by the planning board originally, I was told that the edge of my land will be, at the most, 90 feet from Collector Road A. My neighbor's house is going to be 40 feet from Collector Road A. Currently, of course, that's wooded area. And Bailey's Academy will be developed not far, you know, just to the right of that distance. Again, I wasn't sure where to put in my feedback on this, but what I'd like to ask Chatham Park to do, and my neighbor agrees, is build a very substantial berm on the near, the far side, the northern side of my property. That would be the southern edge of Collector Road A that would reduce the noise from this construction, which clearly is going to be very substantial over a significant amount of time. I don't know what the timeline for development is going to be. Not sure. Talked to different people in the planning board and gotten different stories on what the status is of approval of Collector Road A, et cetera, and that development. So I'm also wondering how I can find out where we are. I was told that my first trip to the planning board, I was told, everything's been approved by the town, and now we're waiting to hear back from Chatham Park on proposed amendments or negotiations by the town. Second time I was there, I was told, no, that's not true. Nothing's been approved yet by the town, and currently, the status of this proposal is with the town. So that'd be a second point. But the primary reason I'm here again is to ask that the town, or whatever the process is, would request that a very substantial berm be built by Chatham Park just south of Collector Road A. Primarily for noise, but on a secondary basis, there is a tremendous amount of water that comes down that hill. We've all seen it pooling on Thompson Street just south of, I'm sorry, just west of Fire Tower Road when we've had really big storms come through. And really pours into my backyard. I've actually built a small ditch there to make that runoff down the hill. We're concerned also that as that land is cleared, that the runoff is going to be increased. And so I thought there'd be a second argument for the building of a berm that would help funnel that water off and away from our properties. And I'm sure that there's an engineering group for the town that's looking at water mitigation, but I wanted to bring it up since I was here. And I'm going to keep it short. That's it. Any further explanation of where we are in this process would be appreciated, and of course, we're hoping for some noise mitigation.
And Kathy? What was your address again?
64 Julian Lane. I'm the very last house on Julian Lane.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
And Kathy, it's broken before the minute, and I suggested that she go ahead and use the public expression, public comment period as a vehicle for introducing her concern, both to the planning and engineering partners that are sitting behind you.
Okay.
And then the officials from Chatham Park who were on the next row. So thank you very much. Are there any other speakers for the citizens' public expression period? Those that did not sign up perhaps? Did not, then we'll move to Commissioner update. And this is the period of time in which we talk about the meetings that we've been to and the things that have, things that have been attended to by us since the last meeting. I have passed out to you all a copy of a letter from the North Carolina Water Quality Division. We continue to make progress on the matter of 1-4 dioxane, and this letter is a wonderful summary of a conference call we had a couple of weeks ago about water quality in San Francisco in the Cape Fear Basin. And it's a very encouraging letter from state officials. I've also had additional discussions with the mayors of Greensboro and Greensville in the last week, and really look forward to being able to make further progress on that. Saturday, I had a wonderful day of working with 60 high schoolers at the Institute of Government. They were high school students interested in environmental matters, and Diana Hales and I from Chatham County and the town of Pittsburgh were interviewed by these high school students. And I think there's nothing any more thrilling than having an impact on young people, especially about the environment. And they were just absolutely terrific, had a good time. And tomorrow, I'll be reading at Pittsburgh Primary School and reading to, I think, second graders. Are there people who have attended Fairground, PBA, Council of Reverend, Main Street, any other meetings of organizations?
I'd like to try and go J, but my voice is not going to allow me to talk about it tonight, so I have to do it at the next meeting.
I have not had a Main Street or a PBA meeting, but there is a meeting tomorrow evening. Roadhouse at 6:30, Main Street meeting, and a presentation by Kelly Horn, the designers of the first four projects slated.
I understand, by the way, that the Roadhouse will not be serving food in the back, and the meeting is simply being held there, but they are not serving dinner. They just did not want it to appear that there was, I guess the word would be self-serve, although that's sort of a pun too, but the, so there will not be table service in the back during that meeting. I would encourage people to come and speak out. I think that the narrowing of the courthouse circle has continued to be something that the town folks and constituents and passers-through have commented on, and I think that the more questions we can ask, the better prepared we'll be for knowing what's going to happen, and the more we'll have an input in what happens. Anything else? Then, under old business, our first item under old business is the rezoning request on 15501. Victoria Bailiff will assist us on this item.
We have rezoning RA2017-01. Graham and Mary Oldham have proposed to rezone 2985 US Highway 15501 North from RA2 residential agriculture to C2 highway commercial. The parcel is approximately 0.62 acres. It has been zoned RA2 since the late 1980s and previously housed base hits and indoor batting cage. The parking lot currently in place straddles the western property line. The adjoining property owner will no longer be allowing the grams to use her portion of the parking lot. The grams are aware that the parking and buffer requirements of any future use must be met without the benefit of any parking availabilities on the adjoining lot. The future land use plan has designated this property for medium-density residential, and the surrounding properties are currently zoned RA2 to the north and east, to the west, RA5, and to the south, a mix of RA2 and EDD. Although the proposed amendment is inconsistent with the future land use plan, staff is recommending approval as the proposed property is positioned along US Highway 15501, a major arterial, and in close proximity to other properties which are commercial in nature. Staff finds this location to be suitable for C2 highway commercial zoning district. A public hearing was held on February 13. Attorney Patrick Bradshaw spoke on behalf of his client, Graham and Mary Oldham, stating that they intend to comply with any zoning requirements and fully understand that they will no longer be allowed access to parking, which was previously provided by an adjacent landowner. Attorney Wade Barber spoke on behalf of his client, Ann Robertson, affirming that she is not opposed to the rezoning, but wishes it to be known that her property will no longer be available for use by the grams, and would like to be assured that the town will enforce all requirements for the zoning district. The planning board considered this rezoning at their meeting on February 6. The board found that the proposed amendment is inconsistent with the future land use plan, but recommended to approve in a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Although we've had a public hearing, and oftentimes we do, we proceed without additional comment, Patrick Bradshaw had asked if he might speak additionally this evening, and so I'd like to recognize Patrick Bradshaw.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that. I was concerned at the public hearing about a perception that seemed to have developed about how the building originally came to be built and used for what it was. The planner has emphasized to me that the question before you all tonight is whether this C2 zoning and the uses that would be allowed under that are appropriate for this property. I'd like to suggest to you that they are. There are a large number of other commercial properties, even though much of the surrounding zoning is residential agricultural. There are a large number of business properties that have been used for business purposes for a long time. There is no one in the public, no citizens, no adjoining property owners have opposed this rezoning request. The building that is there is legally constructed, and it's been there for nearly 15 years. It is not in anybody's best interest, not the property owner, not the adjoiners, and certainly not the interests of the town of Pittsburgh, for that building to go unused. It's not appropriate for residential use. It's not in anybody's best interest for it to fall into disrepair and disuse. So I would suggest to you that the interests of the public health, safety, and welfare would be best served by approving this rezoning request so that property can be put to reasonable uses. If you all have concerns about the history and how things developed the way they did, I'd be happy to talk about that, but I agree that I don't think it's strictly relevant to the question that's before you.
Thank you very much. Other questions? The board for Mr. Bradshaw. All right. And I see that we have on our desk a resolution, a document of consistency statement.
Yes, that is different from the one that is in your package.
In our package, yes. And the corrected Exhibit A, right?
That was for the annexation.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other questions, or Victoria Bailiff? Or is there a motion that you made?
I don't have any questions, but I would like to go ahead and make a motion to approve this rezoning to C2. I have a confidence in, not just in the motion, but the Oldhams that have applied for this was put in here today, complaining on going everything consistent with the Oldham, and they live back there behind that property, so I feel very comfortable that everyone will be just getting it proper mannered. So I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve this rezoning to C2.
Second. Motion by Jay Farrell, seconded by Beth Nelson-Foley. Are there any further questions?
Would you care to make a consistency statement before the motion is resumed?
You need to do the consistency first, and that's a resolution, and the others are orders. And you could do both at one time if you are inclined to do that. Since you could go separate.
Would your motion, Jay and Beth, would like to be to adopt the consistency resolution as well as to rezone the property C2?
Yes, ma'am, subject. I buy that. Simple, you know, it looks easy.
We'll be efficient tonight.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Those who pay their fees immediately by standing by. Those opposed. The motion carries now. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is Sanford wastewater treatment contract, reservation capacity agreement. You have the draft in your package. Paul Messick is going to take us through this, there's a memo regarding the draft. This is the draft that was previously approved, and so much Paul Messick that Sanford was not willing to accept a change, is that correct?
Not so much a question, but not willing to, but let me just back up. The color in your agenda packages that yours is put together like mine is, the color sheet is, should be towards the end of the, of the contract is Exhibit A, the point of delivery. That's the only, at the present time, that's the only map we got going from Pittsburgh to Sanford, so that shows the general route they just wanted to take. So that should be at the back of the contract. This version of the contract is identical to what you all adopted, I guess, four weeks ago, with three different changes that have been made since then. One is on page three in Section D, the second paragraph of that, which talks about the acquisition of additional capacity for wastewater treatment in the event that Pittsburgh, with a separate contract, should purchase reuse water from Sanford. Mr. Fiocco has suggested that perhaps that acquisition of reuse water by other parties as well as Pittsburgh might allow the additional wastewater capacity. Sanford, I don't think, understood what Mr. Fiocco was intending, but in any event, they didn't want to do it anyway. So this version, the version in this contract is what was in the original version that says basically that Pittsburgh can get additional wastewater capacity if Pittsburgh buys additional, I mean, buys reuse water from Sanford. So it's, that is to be determined if and when the town ever desires to buy reuse water. The other change was the date changed from November to January for the delivery of actual cost information in terms of treatment. The change was suggested by Sanford because, on the assumption that Pittsburgh wanted to have actual figures based upon a certified audit. The audit wouldn't be finished until November and not approved until by the local government commission in December, which is the way ours works. So January 2 would be the earliest that the certified information could be made available. And the other change was on Exhibit C, where the calculation of the capacity charge was described. The date was blank in the version that you all approved before. Sanford has suggested January 1, 2018. The purpose of a date there is that this particular language deals with when the calculation is made as to the amount of the capacity fee to be paid. And it is based upon, in the first two options, upon the closing of the revolving fund loan with the state or some other alternative financing if that were not available. And then Sanford had wanted a specific date because everything else was so uncertain. And so, Mr., at any rate, they have suggested January 1. I think that's too soon. You're not going to have your ducks in a row by then, and based upon information that we received from Wooden Company and their estimate of the timeframes involved, May 1, 2018 would be an earlier and better date. Because there's design work that has to be done, the contract has to be bid, and that sort of thing, and then the local government commission has to, I mean, the state has to approve the bid and the contract and all that sort of thing. So May would probably be the earliest before you could ever award a contract, and you have to have a loan in place, or the funds available in place in order to be able to award the contract. So May 1 would be what I would suggest. The reason for that is that the date, whatever date that is, whether it's the earliest of either May 1 or the closing date, if it were earlier than that, would peg the amount of the Sanford long-term debt amount in terms of calculation of the capacity, which would be pegged at whatever that debt amount is, times 16.67%, which would be Pittsburgh's share of the capacity. And then, of course, that would be then calculated into payments over an extended period of time. The first payment wouldn't be until the anniversary of the actual connection of the force main with Sanford. So even if you were to start construction on May 1, it would be a year before you actually finish the force main and get connected, and then it would be another year before you ever had to make the first payment. So payment is a long way down the road, but for purposes of this contract, it's just a date certain, and the amount of the debt is calculated at the earlier of those three different things. So other than that, it's the same as what you all have adopted.
And the board's received a copy from Paul Messick and Bob Efting's letter after his review of the contract. For those of you who haven't read it carefully, I put another copy of that on your desk tonight. So basically, Bob Efting felt that the contract was well done, and that he had a question with respect to the language, determination, and whether this contract would be perpetual in nature, and the NYC felt that the contract complied with Sanford's kinds of provisions. Are there any questions with respect to Paul Messick or Bob Efting's input to the contract? There is a memo that has been given to us by Commissioner John Vonnet, who is absent tonight because of an illness, and he has, he seems to, he said he would be inclined to support the approval of the force main agreement, and asked that in the future that we receive delivery of documents electronically and hard copies so that he could do, so that they would be text searchable in the index.
I believe he's referring to the Wooden contract in that regard.
Thank you. That's right. They just say all, future all contract, you will have to report the documents.
This is digital.
Well, in order to get funding for this force main, we'll have to get approval from the local system. In fact, the funding comes from the state, and I think what Messick is saying is just trying to take us through May or until May. But if it doesn't come through the state, we have to go an alternative route for funding in that last time. And I would rather that the date's certain when we agree as to the amount of capital payment we're going to make in Sanford would be the catch-all. So that it is the worst-case scenario, this fixed date provided, because odds are, we will come to an arrangement prior to that date, and that will set the amount of capital for the project. So if it's 1, not January 1, I would assume they'd have January 1, 2019. Odds are we will come to a funding arrangement prior to that date.
The cost date, no later date?
Well, that's the date is. That's exactly what the date is. It's the first of three conditions.
It's not really, not the later of, it's the earlier of. And it was intended to be a reasonable approximation of when the closing would occur, based upon the information we've received from Wooden, it's May 1. If you think that January 1, 19 would be a more reasonable estimate of when the funds would be available, then that's the way we will count you. That's what you all want to do. That's, that's what you all want to do.
Based on your meetings with Sanford, what do you think that would respond to the date?
Since the number of change is $400,000 a year, it might not make any difference at all.
I was going to say, they probably wouldn't agree to it.
Because it is $400,000 a year.
And the reason for that, Paul Messick, is that, is that if, if we use the, either the May or the January date in there and, and we begin to look at the, at the cost of Sanford's debt, at that, that's the gauge from which everything else continues to progress.
That's, that's the date upon which the calc, the capacity fee is calculated. And it's going to be $6 million there, you know, give or take, you know, $500,000 or so. So, but that's going to be payable over 25 years and, you know, it's not going to be for at least two years past that. So because there was no, you know, the, the date of when this all, the funds can be available is not known because there's so many other variables here today. Later on, we'll have a better idea. But right now, the best estimate is May 1. And, but, I mean, I understand what Mr. Fiocco's saying, the further out it goes, the better for Pittsburgh.
Well, I think when we first were thinking about this, we thought the date that would be appropriate was the day that first drop arrived at Sanford.
Right.
So this is quite a back off of that date. So, and again, this particular date is the catch-all. That if the budget occurs and funding happens after January 1, 2019, the amount owed the debt that was to pay is January 2019. So I just, I think it's reasonable.
Other questions or comments? Ryan, with respect, you look like you have something you want to say?
No, I think that's.
So you're concerned that they couldn't agree?
I think it's totally agreeable, from our point of view. I don't disagree that we would ask for that. But I don't think that Sanford agrees to it based on their previous relationship. That's just, I think, and that's just the issue. I think that's just a matter of perspective because it's worth $400,000 to them to not agree to that date. That's, I mean, that's my only input, I guess, in that regard. Until we ask, I don't know definitively what the answer is.
So there's no part really in rejecting it, or is there? Or is that going to be a straw that couldn't break a camel's back?
It would be better if you all were to consider this sort of in an alternative situation in order to go forward. And you could approve it with the 19 date, but in any event, they didn't agree, then you could come back with the May 1 date.
Or something in between?
Or, yes, some other number, other than January.
Thank you. I'm not sure if it's in the Rocktober.
Otherwise, we have to come back every two weeks.
What kind of timeframe are we looking on this, on this advanced lawsuit we have that we're going to send?
Be roughly the first quarter of 2019.
What would we estimate the construction period to be?
A little bit over, well, if they, we would execute the contract on May 1, 2018, there would be, in, in construction shortly after that, it would be approximately 13 months or so.
For a year without the.
I'm sorry?
And you're saying that if we start delivery, I said since January 2019?
That's when the additional 200,000 capacity would happen.
Additional?
Yeah, we would not be without service for 15 months. And we create also a bigger problem.
Well, what if we move to January 1st, but then as far as the motion is a backup, what we, if they don't agree to it, and we have to argue the second year? You just want to know then?
I would just recommend this is our date. And if they have another idea, then put another date to it. Okay? I mean, that's the way I would do it.
I brought up something at the, at the retreat that I kind of like to bring to the box, and that is that, do we know that, you know, right now, we're sitting here with our sewer permit not coming in the New York City? And once we get the Sanford line project going, is there a chance that the state of North Carolina could say, well, you don't need as much discharge either in Robeson Creek or in Jordan Lake and, and change the terms of our permit? Is that something, Fred or Brian, that, that is possible? And would that not lead us to just asking the state to view the Sanford line as a solution to our current problem?
I've never seen something like that happen before, but it doesn't make me happy that we haven't received our permit as well. I, you know, John Patey's been kind of handling the conversation with the state on it, so I'm not certain how long that's going to take or how that might wait.
And we don't have any clues about why they haven't approved the permit at this point?
Other than what John's been indicating, which is their staffing and volume and things like that. But I'm not 100% sure on that.
But you've got to remember, they permit this for a defined period of time.
Yes.
And so even if there is a 2 million gallon a day solution on the table here, that, that's not to take away from the need that's already been expressed in all the permits that we have. So it, it's the quality of the water and the capability of the stream to receive the water, I think, is what's critical with the permit, not where the other sewer is going.
Well, it's just that I, I remember that the discharge permit into either the heart of the Jordan Lake area at the time it was given was in, in favor. It's now very much out of favor environmentally. And, and so I'm just hoping that, that something will not be taken back because it's perceived that there's solved the problem at the point of Sanford.
I think in the long term, it would solve that problem.
Well, it's true. We haven't yet.
And I think the state is keenly aware of the demand that is being placed on this road.
All right. Are there further questions? And is there, is there a motion that has the language that we need in it to, say, in January?
Well, I think the motion is approved of the contract with the budget amendment from January 1, 2018 to January 1, 2019.
And that's in Section 3 of Exhibit C.
Yep. Page 14.
You heard the motion. Is there a second? Second. I think you tried to say it, but it didn't work. Motion made by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Doug Wilson Foley. Is there any further discussion? I can have just, you know, John, I have to bring up the issue about the documents without a separate, separate thing.
Well, I don't think they have that in the question. The policy is.
Well, his question relates to the next matter on your agenda, not this matter.
Oh, yeah. Okay. There's some favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed. Thank you. Motion carried. And the budget agreement, the next piece of old business, and that is to which John Vonnet's is memo 14. So this budget amendment is to allocate an additional $1.6 million from capital reserve fund balance for professional services between the town and the Woodman Company. Are there any questions on this document for either Heather or Brian Rupke? Glad to have you back with us. Is there a motion? Motion by Jay Farrell to make the budget amendment for the Sanford force main project for professional services by Woodman Company. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Michael Fiocco. Is there a question? Does favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed. Motion for a motion. The next item under old business is the hotel incentives that we started discussing at the last meeting. Brian, is there a question?
Question of Mr. Messick has his mother not in one specific, or not in one specific language in the approved action to provide authority to the mayor to sign the contract.
Okay.
I understood your motion to be to approve the budget amendment, not necessarily to include approving the contract with Woodman.
Okay. Jay Farrell, would you be willing to amend your motion that it not only approved the budget amendment, but also authorized me to execute the service agreement with Woodman Company?
Certainly. I'll amend my motion to include the budget amendment and proceed with the mayor to the agreement with professional services with Woodman.
That you seconded? Is that? Yes. Is that agreeable with you? Okay. So now we are amended as to that motion. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed. Thank you. Tell me, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, in my memo, I outlined where, where I think the board, after some presentation from ECO, Chatham Park and Chatham Economic Development Corporation, and then subsequent board discussion where the board fell on the issues of proposed incentives for hotels. You'll recall that also the Chatham EDC presented some scenarios for incentive, a property tax incentive to the hotel based on the county incentives model. From that discussion, we came up with, I think, some marching orders here in the first four items there, which is that we wanted to develop some specific commitments between the hotel and the town that are particular to the town. And number two, that we possibly look at structuring incentives to be a little bit more conservative in terms of the town's ability to retain some of its property tax revenue from the added growth in order to keep up the stage of development and some of the needs that development would, would create for the town. And third, I've come up with some ideas, which I think I tried to outline in this memo. And then also, too, that we don't set a public hearing any earlier than March 27, 2017. I see Mr. Byatt had sent an email earlier, earlier today, asking if, asking if we could consider LEED certification as well. I'll, I'll admit, I don't remember that from the conversation, but it may very well have happened. There wasn't any intent to omit that from the document. But if you wish to consider LEED certification or a building that could be LEED certified, that's certainly something that you might consider as well. The, the, attack the issue of, of some of the commitments that we talked about that are particular, that we identified a need for that are particular in Pittsburgh. I put five items here, and if you want to add or subtract, that's fine. First one would commit the operator, the hotel operator, to hiring local employees. The second would be that, that the operator commit to complying with the Chatham Park master plan and additional requirements. I should have said with regard to local artists. I continue on in the next sentence, that, that it must certify that it's displaying the work of local artists. The third would be that the operator would work with Chatham EDC and possibly any others, Chamber of Commerce, EBA, et cetera, to market local businesses and attractions, and that they provide a, a way and a means to do that. Fourth, I think was brought up specifically by the board, to provide hotel transportation and its guests to local businesses and events. I think Mr. Bradley from ECO indicated that there would be transportation available at the hotel, but, you know, maybe that is something we want to consider, just kind of formalizing this commitment anyway. And then finally, well, maybe not finally, finally, as far as the points I listed here, that the operator would provide links on the hotel website to local businesses and attractions, continuing kind of with the marketing piece there. And certainly, like I said, you can, you can tell me if, if that's sideways or should, there should be more added to it or taken away or what have you. I'll, I'll just identify real briefly the discussion on incentives. You'll see here that this was the incentive package basically that was presented last time as far as Chatham County was concerned. You can see that this is their tax rate. This is how they would structure, they would structure their give-back, so to speak. Now, keep in mind, this incentive was essentially a 90% grant back to the developer, the hotel operator, of the added taxable revenue, property tax revenue. So in this case, they would be, the incentive amount or the grant amount would be, Chatham County would be giving $79,800 taxable, $80,000 back. Chatham County would be keeping $8,800. That's the, that's the maximum model that Chatham County approved when they discussed this last December. It's my understanding they don't have an agreement on this, and they're working on that issue right now. The, if we were to take the same approach with the town, and this was the policy that was, this was kind of the, the testament that was Mr. Touchstone from EDC had thrown out using a similar scale, you know, in other words, a 90% incentive. You can see that the town would receive approximately $6,000 in the first year, and then, and then eventually that would ramp up. Year five would be granting a 60% incentive, and then eventually year six would be, would be going away. The, the other point that I wanted to make, I think there was an email that was distributed to at one point. The mayor provided a copy for me where the sender, I think, indicated that the town does not receive sales tax revenue from the county, and that's not accurate. If you double check today, and you receive about 3/4 of a million dollars in sales tax revenue to the county. So obviously, that would be by the time that this hotel was built, that would be at minimum $750,000 plus tax. So we would still be receiving sales tax revenue from this. This, this type of incentive, this proposed incentive would not be affecting our continued question of sales tax revenue, which presumably would be larger as a result, as a result of this, this product. So one of the things that I took away from the discussion, as I mentioned before, is that we might want to take a look at becoming a little bit less aggressive with the incentives. that we might want to take a look at becoming a little bit less aggressive with the incentives package, given that the town is in a slightly different position as far as, I don't want to say that the county doesn't need the revenue, but certainly, we're in a position where we most definitely do. So if we look at this first idea, instead of a 90 percent in year one, reducing that to 60 percent, which rather than creating a net tax revenue of $6,000, we would be receiving approximately $18,000 more in tax revenue in year one, and then scaling that down so that each year, we would be receiving progressively more tax revenue with less of an incentive that was branded until eventually after year six, same as the others, it would go away. And that was just taking a number, percentage, and then making it smaller to something that to me felt a little bit more comfortable. Now, I mentioned that we could also go to an approach similar to what Cyber City does right now, which I believe is a flat 50 percent. And so in other words, they're taking added taxable value, they're applying a 50 percent incentive, and then that would mean that we create net tax revenue of 30 percent, excuse me, $30,000 for years one through five. Pretty simple number to remember. And I think it has a lot more value in it than the previous example. Other than we're collecting more at an earlier stage than we would with the previous example. And then finally, the third example that I provided was kind of flipping the first example on its head a little bit, and that's starting out with a lower incentive, but ramping it up over time, so that we're still receiving more than what the county is proposing and what we discussed at the previous meeting. But in terms of a 40 percent incentive, but we're allowing for more of incentive, granting more of an incentive towards the operator at later stages, because presumably by year five, we would be in a better ad-hoc tax revenue position than year one, and we could maybe better afford it and still provide some value to the operator. So again, these are just three examples that I provided in terms of ability. I discussed these a little bit with Kyle Touchstone at EDC. He doesn't think anything is, looks like a deal breaker in any of those three examples that we talked about, nor in any of the commitments that we talked about. And then certainly, the ability of Chatham EDC to help certify some of the requirements that we would ask within those commitments. The hotel operator, for example, certifying the number of jobs, certify local artists, things of that nature, Chatham EDC, that's why they made the big dollars to help solve the situation like that, so we could certainly put them to work on that as well. So again, they're flexible, can be reworked based on your overall preferences and how you want to approach it. I would want to be certain that anything we do, like Danny mentioned in the previous meeting, anything that we do in terms of final resolution of this issue, that we be very specific, that we state the need for the hotel and really what we're trying to get out of whatever it is that we're incentivizing. So in this case, we have a very needed, I think all of us kind of come to some sort of informal agreement, the area needs a hotel. The county certainly had their reasons for entering into their max incentive package to really kind of help stimulate the use and growth of their ag center. I think from the town's overall perspective, we certainly lack places, beds for folks to stay at, even though we've got a couple of three excellent B&amp;Bs and relatives of mine have stayed at, speak highly of, but we still need more beds. And so this provides, in theory, a way to get us there at a slightly faster pace, but at some cost. And so that has to be considered as well. And with that, not asking for any direction tonight, if you wish to discuss, provides some specific instructions for us to follow up on. We certainly can do that. And then, as I mentioned before, that one thing that is required by statute is that before you take action, you have to have a minimum hold of public on the specific things that you want to do within the package. Following that, then you would have to develop an agreement of some sort to, I think, formalize all of this with the developers. If that'll tap out, any other comments or questions, Jay?
Reiterating the need for hotel, I was there to hold cards. We showed this weekend at Fair and tomorrow, and people were staying Durham Hotel because they couldn't get the rooms in Chathamville that were, and things like that. We would have got a lot of them from that this weekend. We've been a lot of overload beyond what our population is here.
Other questions for Brian Grusbeck?
Nothing to see, analysis of estimated sales tax revenue. So Kyle could pull something together on that. That'd be very helpful for me. I don't understand the equation.
One of the things that we talked about last time was to look at Carrboro, who is just going into very recently, Hampton Inn. And that jurisdiction has an occupancy tax. I remember it being just barely discussed. Does anyone, I mean, I know that to put it under an occupancy tax would require a local bill from our legislative, which I can't imagine they would have a hard time with, but perhaps I'm being a little bit naive or snoring for me.
It's a different day.
But providing that kind of support, that way, it's, an occupancy tax, obviously, then means that the people who are occupying the hotel are, in essence, paying the fare, and it's not coming out of our revenues per se. So does anyone remember that Kyle or Kurt Bradley had any comments about trying to get an occupancy tax pass for our jurisdiction? Maybe Kyle could speak to that as an issue as well. Any other feedback that Brian Grusbeck needs to take to either the EDC or the developers? Then under new business then, is our delayed item from our content agenda, which was the Thompson Street Townhouse sewer allocation request. And so we'll turn that matter now.
Did you have some concerns about it?
I just wanted to point out that we are treating everybody the same, that this allocation is subject to site plan validity. They've got an approved site plan, was it back August? Or has this expired? Has it expired?
Well...
Did they ask for an extension?
So this was during a period that I was not here, we had an interim director, and I think it was approved either in July or August of 2015. I do know that the applicant has been working towards getting a builder to build these three units, and has been in contact with staff over the last several months. I think technically, they probably have moved beyond the date, but they have been working with us, trying to get this resolved. And it almost got to the stage of flat approval, but then I was like, oh, by the way, we don't have sewer. I can't sign this flat, and you can't give building permits if you don't have sewer. So we need to put the brakes on this. So if you were inclined to approve the sewer allocation request, I do believe that they would be moving very quickly to full building permits and subdivision property for the town lots. So what was approved was the special use or special exception to have townhomes in R-10. The property was rezoned to R-10 during the same project. It was, it used to be commercial, and then it was rezoned to R-10. And then along with that rezoning, was a special use permit to have it, have townhomes there. Three units being total of townhomes.
So that property is subject to this special use permit. Cannot do anything other than that use?
That's right. Other than R-10's normal, whatever's permitted in R-10.
Yeah.
Which would be mostly single-family residential type development.
Well, I support the budget. I support that.
I guess the only thing that might have changed is that we know now that Thompson Street's going to need to be widened exponentially. Is there, I'm remembering that that plan was pretty close to Thompson Street. So is once, say, this cabin is in there and we're needing to move that street, is that going to impact?
Well, it's a little further down than the impact of Bailey and Chatham Park and the area. So it's a little further down east of this area. I'm not sure the discussion at the time when the townhomes were coming through regarding road widening or sidewalks, if there were not. So that might not be the case today. If that came in, we would maybe look at it a little bit more, but there wasn't any at the time.
All right. Well, is there a motion?
Jeff, with allocation, then you would be in a position to give them a selling compliance certificate?
Yes.
And take that, get a building permit?
Yes, and sign off on the flat.
Well, I would then make motion to approve this allocation, subject to them pulling a building permit within one year.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second? Second? Motion made by Michael Fiocco. Seconded by Kevin Follin. Does it favor? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed? Let's see, motion here. We have Commissioner Updike giving a natural update on projects now. And I'd just like to say, first of all, that the upcoming conditioner meetings on page two, it really helps us see what's coming on.
Yeah, it's a good idea. I'm glad you brought it up. Seriously, it helps me plan things. As you can see, I mean, we didn't really breathe too hard to get the next two meetings scheduled in April 10th. Of course, we don't always see, we don't always see more than a couple of meetings in advance, but I wouldn't be surprised if in the future we have, I don't think I want to go more than three meetings in advance, but I don't know how useful that is. If you have, I mean, I can give you an idea if you really have a question about it, but it's kind of sketchy. And just the other thing I would keep in mind, too, is that this thing's kind of organic. I mean, there might be something that gets yanked. If that's the case, ask me why, or I'll try to tell you on one or the other. If it's helpful, great. It certainly, I think, is a useful thing to put out there, and it doesn't create any more paperwork, by and large, than what we're doing already. So I think everybody, hopefully, is happy.
Thank you.
And I think the only other thing I would add, as far as reports are concerned, and then I'll tap out, is that, if you have my report here, is that the sidewalk over on Pittsburgh Elementary School Drive, correct, go ahead and update if I miss anything. The short story of that is that the survey, the original survey, construction survey that was done on the property, was inaccurate. Our survey, our inspections noticed this. And so we, I guess we basically put things into motion to get the sidewalk placed where it needs to belong, where it needs to go. And so what you saw there this afternoon anyway, was basically a pile of concrete rubble that will be reported, recorded hopefully tomorrow. So we thought, is anyone that's tried to walk on it? I think the issue of the guy wire is going to be resolved or actively resolved.
It's resolved.
So that shouldn't be in the way. It should be just about, once the sidewalk is recorded, you should be in good shape to have walkers and everything else on, yeah. So the 87 portion is done, and I think it's going to be.
I was glad to see the kiosks there have been delivered, and they'll be installed. And every once in a while, I wonder, you know, it does take a long time for those kinds things to be done, but so...
No, we just need to know it locally. I don't know if...
We don't know, we don't have a final answer yet.
Where are they going?
Yeah. Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah. And really, they're bigger than you think. Only when you get out there and measure them relative to our sidewalks downtown, they are bigger than you think. And you can say, well, let me shrink them a little bit. This is before they were ordered. And it's like, well, no, that's not big enough for a host run. So it's not. And I have found it's not as easy as you think to put them downtown. So we've got two locations that we'll come up with, and we're looking for that for a while.
It's like that, if you did the survey, like you put one of the pocket park downtown and it's that long.
The pocket park is one of the best locations we've been at.
One of the biggest. Was that your study? What, hold on. The wall needs to shut up a little bit.
Don't know about property.
There's one here, isn't there?
That's not in the public book. Well, so we can push it on the wall.
That's what I mean. But these are designed to be like apples.
Yeah, they're four-sided, and I think they're four and a half feet wide.
So will this be the kind of thing that will be locked and you have to get permission for the door, or is it just like, give it up there?
Just bring it up there.
Cool.
Great. And of course, we've already talked about our traffic circle. Meeting will be tomorrow night. And are there any other questions about the manager's update? Nothing, we'll move to Commissioner Pissard. Jay Farrell?
Mr. Grusbeck just took care of one, and that was the sidewalk. The other one, I got a call from a lady on, actually today again, she lives on the corner of West Corn, Lawless, and Winsong. I believe that's the street that goes into Potterstone. I know I talked to you about this about a year ago. Somehow, some part of that road is state, and some of it's town. It's not paid. Is there any way we can do anything to either get that on our payment schedule, or see what the state can do?
Yeah, we've talked to the state about that. And the, I don't, the issue that I have with it is I would prefer that the state actually pays that as opposed to having the town pay that. But I think that the state is willing to give up roads like that. We're actually probably going to be looking at Russell Run here shortly. They're more than willing to give up maintenance responsibility for certain roads. It's my position that I would rather have them get the road in position, have them actually pave it since it's their road right now. But that's something we need to finalize with the state. The other thing is that we're running through an area of town, that road would essentially be running through an area of town that is not in town. So we're kind of, we're paving an area of town that isn't receiving, you know, shouldn't, we're not receiving ad hoc property tax from them, kind of giving them a town benefit.
You can't do that. So you can't pave the street outside of town.
So you can't pave a street outside of town. You can't have a street outside of town.
Jay, is your constituent now to be incorporated into the town?
Well, I think she is, because she's in Potterstone, but that road comes right by the side of her house, she's on that corner lot in Potterstone. And the traffic, and all that, that road ends and goes to our fine pocket neighborhood that's sitting out there, that looks very unattractive. But she has just asked me numerous times about this, and I told her it was state road, it was not, not part of the town. Pass her on, Mr. Mason.
The town talks about, you all have talked about it before, I mean, somebody needs to solicit a new annexation request, and I'm not sure why they want to be in town if they have to pay town taxes.
Well, they're not going to agree to it. I mean, the other option there is to just somehow convince the state to pay for that road, which they could certainly do, and then we wouldn't have to worry about the annexation issues. So that's something we can talk about as well. I, in that case, the flip side of that is the state really doesn't have any interest in doing it. You know, like.
Maybe after.
She has said several times about the potholes in the road, hadn't been sprayed or anything like that, a long time, so we can just look into that.
Yeah, I'm going to be talking to some of those guys tomorrow. So we'll see where around.
I don't really have anything other than the amount that we all received from your family about the trash around that dumpster, which is not, our jurisdiction is, I don't think, we don't know for any other steps we could take.
It was nice that the Department of Police found out that it's a dumpster, so it's determined that some dumping, I'm not sure that we have, but it's a good touch.
I don't have a concern, I'm happy to hear that the citizens' comments on the UDO will be posted on the website, so that everybody can review, we're reading 140 pages of comments.
They can discount the 70 pages.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Single space.
Probably.
Double sided?
Yes, double.
Are they legible?
Yes.
All right. Kamala Baldwin said that she has nothing to add to the conversation, and she can't add to it. Well, all I can say is that in the year and two months that I've been mayor of this town, I don't believe we've ever gotten out of eight campaigns for her, especially after last meeting, when we went to almost quarter after eleven, so.
Well, that's so moved.
You've heard the motion to adjourn from the local CDO, is there a second? That's Kamala Baldwin. So does the town please stand?